Got it. Um, they had that phone call last month. Trucks will be out for Halloween night, um, there's already another twenty second. And I saw a post that they are looking for fundraiser volunteers. Um, so they're looking for, I don't know where it is at the moment, but I didn't see people sort of voting for people to help them. Get together with the committee to do fundraisers. So twenty second. I think it was all that out. Check them out. I can see so.
Edit it.
Yes, that was on you.
Thank you for your research. So. So there's work we've got to change in that memory for random of others standing, we think we have in final.
Yeah, it was fine. It's a new brick wall. I got, I did same back years ago. Little life pact. But not like that, but also.
Sure is. Correspondent Heather.
We have the uh, the campus for for the most. So for two D A dissections for three responses and uh, three calls for. I got some. It's a P H F A only have. For uh, the how to for the. Your funding has been online, but you have a number twenty. She just said that. She says what's the difference? You can have that in the last two years. Two thousand twenty five. How low days ability is. Six to seven. Uh. Our two. Will be Google. In November. Uh, portion. So now. Something in department like that. Protection as a. Probably a twenty three million in. Freight and transportation. Intended to support. Distribution from. These power. And. The. This. Um, Leslie breakfast. From the chamber of coconut. Number fifteen. Eight A M is registration. For Chris Bumvee. Eight thirty, eight thirty to ten. The um, house speakers. Conversers. Senator Baker, Senator Brown, Representative. Senator. We have a crowd where costs happening on Saturday after the twenty fifth. At our D Wilson.
I'll talk more about that when I get to. Oh, okay. I'll talk about more of that.
And. I was. Pretty. Miss article. Okay.
Senator.
Thank you.
Guests and citizens, hi Joe.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Um, Halloween parties and park this year is on Halloween for those that don't understand the date on a flyer. Because we always live on Halloween. Those that um, do party with the park. They can always give it up. Um, we do a park from five to eight. Um, waiting for this is taking visitors this year. The historical society will be um, taking visitors here. We still have costume contests. This year we're asking for people to bring and I have a question. Or pretty weird. But I'll hear as well. So if we could try to, how about. I'm sure it was off. That night. Um, we had a hat that was um, we were trying to. That I have heard. Something. Where we at. Um, we have. Um, the open street. A few. Charge. They want their cars and their trucks. Passion goes down South Street, so um, we can put them on South Street and then they don't have to. Drive coming back. Just probably. And of course, fire company, of course, helping. Fighting across the street. Um, I did carry some of the available on on Friday night, um, as far as the police. Um, and I'm also asking that I go to the park is not available that we are able to set up here. Um, as a part of this. Um, instead of continuing our. Our good. Happening. This is also. And. For me. Um, Christmas looking to be somewhere as well. Um, Sam will be coming and um, allegedly potentially if we have a place to come, um, will be coming that day. And the tree lighting.
Awesome. Lots going on. Yeah, the the. Do you know what? Now, this is a. Number.
Yeah, things changes and I'd like to just be able to move it up here.
The haunted bus will definitely have to be here because there's not enough space there for the haunted bus, yeah.
And it just started, so there's a lot more to be torn off.
So by the time Halloween rolls around, and we did vote on it last meeting to close South. This.
Joe. On this Halloween twenty fifth. Changing into the third.
It's always on Halloween. It's on Halloween the thirty first. We usually do five to eight. He'll fly downtown. And. Town. Um, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Miller. Hello.
Thank you. Um, so shortly after Halloween, the Historical Society shuttered for the winter. Because it's too costly to eat. Um. I.
True.
That issue in in solving, is there specific or something to speak with to make arrangements for our meeting? We meet the. The fourth Tuesday.
A lot of.
Yeah. Just checking. I get.
I think there's a.
Work.
I think. They were. I think. Oh, I think. I think somewhere else completely. Can you give your request? I can ask. That's all. They all start.
Oh, yeah. Paul. Okay.
So there is somebody useful. I got an idea. So we initiate. But.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um. Mrs. McDonald.
Um, I know it's been discussed before. It's not on the agenda, I get to put it on the agenda, I guess, in order to talk about it at some point in time, is the wage tax. Because I know South Canaan has recently initiated a wage tax. And from what I understand, South Canaan Township is is looking to do that too. And I'd just like to see the money that's going out to these other communities near far. For that money to stay within our own community. So. I know it's been discussed, I hope to be resumed discussions on that at some point.
Yeah, we talked about it, uh, I guess a couple of months ago now, we talked it on the uh, on the agenda, or the um, ballot for the fall, but we were, it was too late. So, uh, yeah.
Does it have to be on the ballot in order to take action? Or would it be done just the borough members?
It's not just this pro consulate, we need to advertise ordinance. For. I believe it's thirty days, so if we were. Vote. On. It. We could either. We should take. For next month, ordinance that we need to be advertised to the public for thirty days. So if it's advertised, if we vote on it and advertise next month. That would give us December to be able to. For it.
Okay.
We will be setting up a hearing or a meeting. And I guess we could, we could uh, discuss it then.
Okay, so if it went to council. Is it a done deal if it didn't get voted? Or put then next year put on the ballot?
If it's voted, if it's voted by any chance, voted yes in December, then it would take effect.
Okay. Okay, what if it wasn't voted for? In November?
If it was voted down by council.
Then.
Could you put it on the ballot for next year? Yeah.
We, yeah, we could probably put on the, you might be able to put on the primary.
Okay.
I would have to check into that.
All right.
But it can be voted by council.
Right. So if you want it done.
Yes, you you put it out and or you.
Put out an ad for the publicity. And you have a month, the second month for the publicity say. Hey, we want this, we don't want this. And then it's up to the borough council. After those days, I guess you're not. And is there information available? For how much money is currently paid out to other. Um. In. Twenty three. Three hundred and seventy two pounds of paint out of community is a total of one hundred and four thousand three nine dollars and eighty two cents. In that, it will be increased to one's payments. Yes, if we were to an app. At one percent. Um, January first, first. Year. January first twenty six, it would generate approximately one hundred and nine thousand to. Two hundred and ten thousand. In reference to the borough in those twenty six increases value.
And you think the borough needs some capital?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It would be nice to be able to pave our roads. My other. And. Have our police on a little bit more and be able to help the fire company and give our employees raises. Yes.
Um. My other question is, is on the corner there on Belmont Street before Silvercrest, one of our streetlights is blinking like a strobe light. I don't know if it does it all the time. But it was like really, you know, so I don't know if the bolt's going.
Where is that at?
Right by our road, it's like in front of the farmhouse before we turn into Silvercrest.
Don't like, uh. Yeah.
The wolf is there. I saw it tonight.
Oh, did, yeah, okay.
I did report it.
It's, I thought it was a little further down than that one, yeah.
Probably the one on the end of South Street.
Yeah, that's reported three times.
Um, yeah, I know you recorded, but then you just ignore it.
Well, I had a guy from my. Asking what. Home. To our. Call. Took a ride one night.
Yeah. 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 Yesterday. That's recent. I mean, usually out at night and um, it was just going off like a stroll. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is. This is.
All right, this is a report that Don Block made, so it tells me some understanding, so he he wrote this. It's a active construction work that's doing it now. Douglas, the blocks were delivered last week, did you go down and see them? Okay. Pioneer donated labor to lay blocks ASAP. Lumber and doors to be ordered from Durham's this week. Ken calls. C E Enterprise donating labor to construct roofs and install doors. Building secure donation from the J C's to take the dugout materials, I think that is absolutely wonderful. Change orders, there are two change orders, but they're minor, uh, just a few things. And the one thing is the backstop support. The supports need to be added to take the place of the story building that is not being built. The backstop was intended to be attached to the building for support. Still waiting for Pioneer to provoke, to provide the quote. Second thing, paved cut for utilities. Change order quote requested to construct the sewer line from the manhole and ran in railroad lane to eight feet beyond edge of pave. And cap for future connection. And to install a six inch PVC casing under the road in the same trench for installation of a future water line. This work is part of the current project permit, so we would like to complete the road car. And restore the pavement under the contract. Make sure you totally find and structure it easier. Finances, we are applying for a couple of. And uh, we uh, had to contact Harrisburg and it's possible, C N R, that they will give us another grant. Pioneer application for payment number A A was submitted to Shane on ten June twenty five and attached for convenience, and you said you took care of that, right?
Yes. Jim, I'd like to interrupt, how much, how total was those, the change order amount? Because it wasn't reflected in. Number eight. If you. He did. There's just. I think I'm running myself out of time. I'm trying to figure out. My. Um. And. Finally, that's not a call. Yeah.
A determinate twenty thousand pound donation has been received yet in an ass, it was fifteen thousand one twenty. Five thousand was for the park. Uh, balance expected to be available in account upon payment of current contract. Contract. Um. Needs of sale, potential sale. Well, and any proceeds to be returned to the project company. It's almost. Number.
Almost like twenty two fifty, two thousand two hundred and fifty.
And I'd like to point out. With those lights. That's twelve lights. Or fifty minus or something.
Twelve.
The, so we have quite a few left. And so we should advertise the lights in back of the building that I have no idea where they came from. Anyway, along we spent almost twenty thousand dollars for those lights. Uh, that we have.
I did set up a muni.
Did you?
Good, oh, wonderful. Did you get a chance to go in and look at that at all?
No.
No, it's okay, yeah, so it's there, it looks like it's pretty. Efficient setting it up.
So it's actually thirteen, because Shane sold the one, he sold the one for two fifty. And then I.
It was twenty six fifty.
I got twelve for twenty six fifty.
Yeah. Twelve.
Uh, we need to make an application D C N R for payment of the remainder, remaining grant balance to the project account, which is about a hundred thousand dollars. Balance of project contracts, pioneer construction, all work complete except the two small change orders. Mellow lighting, they did the lighting. Installation of electrical service upon completion of the dugout building that will house the panels. Conduit's on three baseline is flooded and presumed to be broken. Waiting for proposal from Mellow to rectify the problem at their expense. They have not submitted the payment since the first payment was made. They are still owe fifty percent of their contract amount. Any payment application made will exclude that portion of the conduit until the problem is rectified. Uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. So he's staying up top of everything, and if you get a chance, please go down and see what has been doing down there at the field.
So the the lights aren't finished yet?
The 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 lights are finished except the box, to control them.
Okay.
We also need to have a committee here on council that'll have. Set rules and regulations about the use of the lights, this is extremely important, or we could get bankrupt. We have to get those. But that's.
Could could we see about getting, um, because that field was used for lifelight? Could we see about getting?
Windsocks.
Two windsocks? And get them on two different poles on both sides?
Do you know how much they cost?
I don't know, I I looked up just a quick Google search.
Where would you get them from?
You can get them at Home Depot, but they're cheap ones, they were like ten bucks. I mean, I would think we would want something a little bit better quality than ten dollars, but.
The young man in Waymark just learned how to be a pilot. I'll, and he goes to the airport every day, not, not the local airport, I mean, oh, Oakenham. I'll ask him and see if he could find out how much the windsocks would cost. They couldn't cost too much.
No, I mean, if anybody knows what the specifications are?
Yeah.
And what kind of material, I could probably make them. Unless it has to be.
And uh. Pennyman and Stacy could have took care of that. She had a handle license, didn't she? I um, I have so much cold medicine in my head. And uh, and he estimate pays a large portion of the fencing item. There is still forty thousand outstanding to be paid on the fencing, which is appropriate for the work still to be completed on the fence. If you have any questions on this payment application, please do not hesitate to call me, Joe's alive, so anybody wants his number. I I try to answer as much as I can, but he he's he's the final word. And now to move on to Wayside Park, you all see that they started today, my first, and uh, they are starting to uh, dig up and follow the directions that they have. And they are very committed to the fact that as they progress and do things, that everything will be marked off with um. All kinds of tape and bill and uh, things that you. People cannot step in that, or of course, people if they want to, will, but if uh, it'll be very noticeable where they're working. And uh, so Jason came up this morning and and met with him and uh, they are committed to try to get it done in three weeks. And then after that, um, then this company Play World, which is in around to Harrisburg, I think, or Lancaster, is it? They will come in with the toys and the different things that they have. We also have already received the tables, you probably saw them over there, uh, they are, they weigh two hundred and some pounds each. And the reason that they do that is because they are made of cement and they purposely have um. All kinds of ash and different things in in it, so that nobody can vandalize them and nobody can leave them. So uh, the four tables did come to it. And uh. And as uh, as uh, Chris alluded to you, we finally got settled with the cottage hose in the borough, the cooperation agreement that state requires now. And so I'm going to get that turned in this week. So that's where we are right now. Any questions? Please visit the sites, both sites, and show your interest.
Becky Jane. Budget Finance, Teresa.
Um, we need to set up a date for budget meeting to work on twenty twenty six budget. Um, Heather, what is the the timeframe for advertising?
It has to be advertised once or twice.
Once, I think.
Okay, so do.
Not everything has to be advertised twice, like certain things. Um, I can go back and look, I can, I can, I have workers.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure.
So are, is it enough time to do the twenty third?
Of.
That would be next.
Over?
Yes.
No.
Okay, twenty eighth is better?
Twenty eighth would be.
A Tuesday.
To have it advertised.
Today's the fourteenth.
Has to be advertised twice though.
So it would be.
Today's the fourteenth, it would, could be advertised on the sixteenth. And then on the tw- I don't know, it'd be too late for the sixteen, eighteenth and the twenty third.
Okay, so we're good for the twenty eighth.
Shelley's not around.
Yeah, and there's something else.
Halloween parade and home sales the twenty eighth.
My sister's gonna say that phrase that night.
I'll be in Florida.
How about, um.
We feel bad for you.
Will be in Florida.
Mon- uh, Monday the twenty seventh?
Monday the twenty seventh?
Shall we?
I'm not around that Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, let's go at the twenty ninth.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday, yeah.
That's a Wednesday. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, October twenty ninth at six thirty?
You have to zoom.
You won't be here?
He's gonna be in Florida.
The, the special meeting with the housing people is the twenty third, right?
That's the twenty first.
Twenty first, okay.
What about the next week, the November third, like fourth of that week, election day is the fourth.
You're good November third?
November fourth.
Or November fourth?
On election day, you don't wanna be on election day.
I've already.
I mean, people usually, I mean, I don't know how much.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody else, I've already voted.
I mean, is there anything going on special like, I don't know, yeah, I mean, so. November fourth?
Everybody good with the fourth?
Good with the fourth?
I'm good.
Yep.
Okay, November fourth at six thirty? And we'll have to make a motion for that. Do that now or at the end?
Yeah, still down.
I'll make a motion to have our planet, planet, planning, budget planning meeting, November fourth at six thirty at the Borough Bill.
Motion made by Shayna, seconded by Don, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, extensions, nothing passes. We'll see you the fourth. Is that it?
Um, yeah, cause I already discussed the lights. Um, the only other thing, and I, well, I got an email today, I'm waiting on the funds to have. The creek done. We had to update the UEI number. I had to go in and have that all updated in FEMA, so that they can get it back to PMA, and PMA will then send us the money. So.
It's a unique number.
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's in the process, as soon as. PMA looks into the FEMA website and sees that everything's been updated, they'll be hopefully sending.
Well, how about the work that they do on the bridge on Delmas? Will that have any effect?
No, that's, that's nothing to do with.
Okay, cause they've been working that too, it's.
Yeah, the project that I'm working on will start behind the Legion.
Okay.
And head down to the, the, uh, building center.
I'm offering back of the Legion.
Yeah.
Yep.
He, um, I guess he, he talked with the contractors to see where they would be going to, and that's where his start point will be. And then he'll go down, hopefully it's before we get any rain.
I think it's funny that they've been dredging it out and they, you can't use the word dredge anymore, you know?
Yeah.
They've been under the bridge there.
So, that's all I got.
Thank you, Teresa. Streets and Roads, Shane, uh, this year we get to put our material shed to use for the first time.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it for like four years.
Yeah, our roads will be the finest they've ever been. Uh, no pressure, Leroy. But before that, so, um, if we dump bulk material into those, into that building now and we start pushing into it, it's gonna push up against the back wall. Push up against the material buildings up, which we don't wanna do. So, uh, Leroy asked about concrete blocks, those two by, two by sixes, and we need about thirty of them. We could use liquid fuels money. Um, it's probably about three thousand dollars in concrete blocks, so basically you're gonna build a concrete bin inside of the building. So we get them, right, to keep it and you can push against it, you guys get it, right? Okay.
Would you get something like that?
Uh, Wayne County Concrete, like all the concrete plants make them. So, yeah, it's like, it's, it's probably about three thousand. Uh, and then bulk salt and a load of cinders to mix it. Um, we're looking at probably, I don't know, maybe another fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars for that. So it beats, i- i- it's quite a bit cheaper than the way we've been doing it in the past, cause we would buy pallets of, uh, fifty pound bags of salt. And then Leroy would have to throw them up onto the back of the truck, cut them over with a knife, dump them in, and then repeat. And that would take a fifty pound bag to fill a two ton hopper, is insane. And then last year we bought bagged, uh, two thousand pound bags of salt. We'd have to grab back, go pick it up over the truck, build a little shoe, dump it in, so this is just gonna be a lot easier, faster, and save Leroy's back and labor for sure. Um, so, we just gotta vote on the, uh, concrete blocks and, uh, we have to purchase, we always purchase salt anyway, so we have to just use that budget. But it's, it's quite a bit cheaper to buy it, buy the triaxal load or tandem load versus pallets or bagged salt. So that actually is a savings in the long run, really, but we gotta get these concrete blocks to save that building. Any questions?
Um, yes. The, uh.
The chains, there won't be any clean rubers if the chains don't get fixed for the doors. It takes two men to pull that door out.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wasn't there supposed to be a, what's it called?
I don't know if they can adjust.
Is it?
Both deal will adjust the top, pull it or anything.
Okay. Huh, alright. I wonder if it's under warranty then still?
Is that the same paper that?
Uh, Armada.
Uh, it was all he could do to raise that door when we were there with the lights.
Yeah? Is it just off a track or something?
No, it, it, I don't know if, if it's just sprung too tight.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, you know, if it, if it could be adjusted.
Right.
Cause it, it takes, you have, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to.
Yeah.
Well, they need to be called back.
Yeah, that's just an adjustment.
And weren't we putting lights?
No, no, we never had, uh, we didn't have the money in the grant.
It wasn't in the grant.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep, so we just need a motion for blocks, two by two by sixes and, um, bulk salt.
Is that two motions or?
Um, I suppose we should, yeah. Yeah, 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 for the, for the salts. Yeah, yeah, and then the blocks, probably three thousand bucks, I don't know.
And how many blocks was that, Shane?
Hmm, roughly thirty, I don't think we quite need thirty.
Do we ever get the money for the material shed? Yeah. So they ever get it to us?
I'll make a motion, purchase the blocks from the material shed.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Sh- uh, Teresa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, extension. Buy the salt and bulk.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Shayna, all in favor? Aye, nays, extension. No, that was it. Yep, we're good. Thanks, Randy. And that's it for me, parks and rep.
Okay, so Michelle already talked about Halloween, but just to reiterate. What we're gonna do, and if you're looking to have some baked goods and want to donate, you can bring them down to the park or South Street by four o'clock. Um, and also reiterate the canned goods for our food bank. Um, there is a list on Facebook of items they need for the upcoming holidays, which is potatoes, gravy, that kinda stuff. Um, but that's Halloween. So, um, the one hundred seventy fifth celebration for Waymark, we had our first meeting. Um, our, it is going to be June thirteenth, twenty twenty six. It will be the same day as our parade and the same day as the fire company's. Parra, so it'll be, I don't have the times just yet, but it will be during the day. Then the parade lineup will start, parade will happen and will end at the Grove, so it's, we're not taking away.
I'm sorry. Not a kid, sorry.
No, so this way we're not taking away from the fire company, um, and people are already hopefully coming into town for the parade, so we're just gonna kinda make it one big celebration. And obviously the Historical Society is going to do something, um, but we had our first meeting. Uh, I am asking for permission to have our next meeting here, November thirteenth. And we still need volunteers, cause, you know, there was only six of us that showed up. Um, but thank you Wendy, Katie, Teresa, Mr. and Mrs. Miller. And I talked with Shelley, uh, we do have an activities account already, so when we start looking for donations and, you know, cause obviously things are gonna cost money. Um, especially the things we talked about, so we do, already do have an account that we can put that money into to utilize for that, so. That's all I have on that. Next.
And before you go out, is that also gonna include the two hundred fiftieth American, so like the?
Oh, the United States.
I don't know, I'm only doing the one seventy five for Waymark.
Cause I think.
We do know that there is a time capsule over there, I'm gonna try to find somebody that has some light on tools.
We did, we did, um.
I remember mine was put in the ground unfortunately.
We did receive, we did receive something from the state last year about the two hundred fiftieth. Cause Pennsylvania's doing a big and they want, so the, the two hundred fifty.
We could tie it in.
We could probably tie it in if we get enough people.
That's what I think, I think that.
Yeah.
But I'm already be that and parade, so I'm already double dipping, so the more volunteers we get, the better, but I mean, we could obviously do something, my main concern is.
Yeah, I think that probably, cause I think the state and the, they're looking at as many small communities to celebrate.
Yeah, and we'd like to, obviously we want, I would like to do like a dedication at the park, you know, with the mayor, with the council. Um, that kinda stuff, but we do have that time capsule, I'm gonna try to find somebody with some lidar tools to see if we can locate it, cause I thought it would be really cool to pull it out. And then see what's in it, and then we can add to it and put it back in, and then mark it, so we know where it is. Um, but that, we have lots of suggestions, we were there an hour or so, and we have lots of ideas, but Mrs. Miller's working on a couple of things, Katie Talarico's working on a couple of things. Um, so we're just getting started, but I would just ask for permission to use this building for November thirteenth for our next meeting. If that would be okay. Um, next, this coming Saturday, October eighteenth, the RDWPTA is having a fall carnival. Um, games, face painting, pumpkin painting, obstacle course, basket raffles, concession stand, haunted hallway and more, it's free admission. You can buy tickets to Paya Teacher, the kids absolutely love that. Um, and then there is low cost bundles, and this is all for the RDWPTA, so if you have nothing to do on Saturday, please check that out. Um. That's, okay, and then the craft fairs for a cause, which is I'm part of, is happening the following, following weekend on the twenty fifth at the school. There is no admission, the concession stand is done by our Girl Scout troops. Um, we are also asking for people to bring a nonperishable item for our food bank, cause, you know, that's a big thing in our town. Um, you get free entry into our door prize, and I'm just gonna let you know, the door prize is a fifty five inch TV with some accessories, so. Uh, over fifty vendors, fifty fifty raffle, and the first forty five shoppers will get a nice fancy tote with craft fairs for a cause on it. And, yeah, and all, I don't know if anybody knows this, but the craft fairs for a cause, all of the money we raise goes back to the community, so we donate to RDWPTA, fire company, uh, church. School programs, clubs, so it all just stays in the community, um, for all the kids, so, yeah, I think that's all I have.
Ten years, um.
Ten years, yeah.
I ca- I can say that.
And we have plenty of flyers, so if you need flyers, I got.
That, that, that makes me, seeing that it's ten years, that makes me smile, because Kirsten.
Started it.
Originally started this at the fire company ten years ago.
I took her spot, thanks Kirsten.
Yep, I mean, it's.
So. But it's fun, we're gonna, there's even a person coming, chair massages, we're gonna have some nonprofits there, we always give tables to nonprofit, um. So we're thinking the Hamlet Library is gonna be there, and a animal rescue will be there, we don't charge them for a spot, and it's a lot of fun, so if you have nothing to do.
I think there was maybe, what, ten vendors that year?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so we're, I think we're at fifty five vendors, I know it's over fifty, I'm not exactly sure on the list, but lots of different things, so. Come on out.
Busy. That's great, okay.
And that's all I have.
Just vote on the, uh, what'd you say, thirteenth?
November thirteenth, yep.
Okay.
We don't have anything else going on that day, right? Like I, I just kinda picked a date with everybody that was there, if that was okay.
Uh, I don't know.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, you can, you can schedule anybody.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah, okay.
I used to write it always on the calendar, or that we should write it on the calendar, then that way we.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, how about the one that's over here?
Yeah, well, this is the church calendar and.
Yep.
There's, there's twenty five hundred names on there.
Okay.
The population of Waymark is less than two thousand.
Wow. Okay, yeah, you're, you're, it's all good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Shayna, utilities, Don. Chasing street lamps around. See, yeah. Uh, purchasing, Randy. Unfinished business.
I have some here.
Okay.
We have a letter dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, it's from attorney Anthony Magnata Esquire on behalf of PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. Does anybody know who that is or what that is?
Yeah.
Pennsylvania at ambulance, isn't it?
Yeah, they're over in Pike County mostly.
To whom it may concern is a follow up to my correspondence on June fifth, two thousand twenty five. Does anybody remember getting a letter from these people?
Yeah, I read.
Yes, it's sitting, it's sitting on the desk right back there.
We, we read it and we decided it didn't really apply, I think.
Okay.
We have to.
Can we grab that letter?
We have to some.
Can you grab that?
Yep, we have to support our ambulance corps.
Let me finish. Meeting of the PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. was held on July thirtieth, twenty twenty five. It was noted that no response was received from your organization, which receives advanced life support. And basic life support services from Pennsylvania Ambulance through PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. On behalf of the, upon behalf of the board of directors, I must request the courtesy of a response to our previous correspondence. Since budget time is around the corner, it would be a wonderful time for each of you to take a closer look at your budget. And determine whether funds should be allocated for support of this important program through PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. Board of directors requests that their correspondence and prior correspondence be read into the record at your meeting. The PPH Ambulance Association, Inc., board of directors will be meeting again in September of twenty twenty five. At that time, decisions will be made with respect to the future of service. And those decisions will definitely take into consideration the responses or lack of response we receive from your member organizations. Thank you for your consideration and cooperation, sincerely, Anthony J. Magnata Esquire. Can I read that other one? So they asked that these both be read tonight, so I'll read this one. June fifth, two thousand twenty five from Anthony Magna, our PPH Ambulance Association, Inc., to whom it may concern. I'm writing to, in my capacity as solicitor for PPH Ambulance Association, Inc., PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. is a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation incorporated for the purposes of providing emergency medical services to the municipalities of Pawpack Township. Hollyborough and Palmyra Township, Wayne County. PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. has contracted emergency medical service, ALS and BLS services for the service area of Hollyborough, Palmyra Township and Pawpack Township. Through Pennsylvania Ambulance, beginning in July twenty twenty three and continuing to the present. The three stated municipalities fund the nonprofit corporation and PPH receives no other funding. I have been asked by the PPH board of directors to contact each of the municipalities to which ALS and BLS services were provided by our contractor to request financial assistance. To continue this necessary program. Although PPH is a nonprofit corporation, it is unable to continue the financial obligations necessary to provide these services to your municipalities without financial assistance. I know many of you who are reading this letter may not be familiar with how your municipality is served by PPH Ambulance Association, Inc. And therefore, I am providing you with a breakdown of calls responded to by Pennsylvania Ambulance by location, which is attached here too for calendar year twenty twenty four. Do we have the attachment that's not here? Based upon our annual review, it appears that ALS and BLS services contracted for by PPH are currently being utilized in the following manner. Twenty percent of Pennsylvania ambulance responses occur within our service area, while eighty percent occur outside of PPH service area. Twenty percent of Pennsylvania ambulance responses occur within our service area, while eighty percent occur outside of PPH service area. PPH Ambulance Association's contract with Pennsylvania Ambulance for ALS and BLS services has significantly enhanced the availability. Of EMS services to the benefit of the entire county. Although this is a benefit for the entire county, PPH Ambulance receives no financial support for most of the jurisdictions being serviced. Penn Ambulance continues to operate from its two designated stations. Where a twenty-four hour per day ambulance is located in Lakeville, Pennsylvania, and a twelve hour per day advanced life support vehicle is located in Holly. Based upon the facts recited above and contained in the exhibit, PPH's board has requested that I reach out to you as a provider of emergency medical services in your individual jurisdictions. To seek financial assistance. I would ask that you please pay special attention to the total breakdown of costs for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Clearly, your jurisdiction is benefiting as well as the entire county and portions of Lackawanna and Pike Counties based upon our agreement with Pennsylvania Ambulance. PPH wishes to continue to provide beneficial ALS and BLS services for the region. And believes it is absolutely necessary to do so, however, it cannot continue to provide such services without financial support. From the jurisdictions who are receiving the benefit of the service. The board of PPHs looks forward to discussing these issues with your board counselor association. To reach a logical and amicable conclusion on how to move forward in the future in an attempt to continue this necessary service. Unless we receive additional support from the municipalities receiving services. It will be necessary for PPH to reach out to the general public to identify the services provided and seek for additional financial support. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, each of you, for reviewing this correspondence as well as the enclosure, and look forward to meeting each of you on an effort to continue to provide necessary. Emergency medical services within our region, thank you for your consideration and cooperation, Anthony J. Magnata Esquire. So while I was waiting here, I just did a little Google search, they were just before the commissioners on September eighteenth, basically looking for money. So I think they're in tough financial streets. According to this, uh, paper that they sent to us, uh, Waymark Borough had. Thirty-eight calls throughout the entire year, twelve months, so about three calls per month.
So is this separate from Cottage?
But I don't know.
Yes, but I, I wanna tell you, that's deceiving, because Waymark Borough isn't thirty-eight, it's people who live in Waymark.
Right, not, not just the borough.
And so consequently, so it's not just the borough.
Were there mailing addresses for Waymark, is that what you mean?
Sure.
Yes.
So Clinton.
Can't even.
Yeah, it was all about the, yeah, exactly, so.
Kane.
And the second thing is, when we had trouble here in Waymark, I was on the ambulance for thirty-five years.
And.
Is. Heather, is Clinton on there or Canaan on there separately broken out?
Yes.
They are, so it's not, it's just Waymark, it seems to.
And it's very likely, uh, uh, I just did a quick Google shirt search, it's very likely that they get paid by Medicare for medically necessary services, which is eighty percent.
They need to do what Cottage chose to do.
What do they do different?
They have a finance office and they apply to all your insurances, and that's what keeps it coming.
It's Cottage, right?
They're a four brother.
Okay.
I would just offer a suggestion, if, if you're entertaining this in any way, first thing you wanna do is take a look at their financial statements.
Mm-hmm.
They should provide us a copy of their last audit or financial statements, because how do we know how bad they're doing?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's actually online, I found it on some.
And what's going to stop the other ambulance corps asking for money?
I don't know, and is that gonna hurt Cottage if we have somebody else over here?
That's what, that's what the conversation was in June, was that Cottage, Army provides.
Yes.
And the money that the borough treat the building and the rent free, that's how the conversation went.
They'll be running, trying to.
To the old sticker company.
Because Cottage, cause Cottage is here.
Does Cottage provide what they have there, or?
Yeah. Yes.
EMS and BLS and whatever, or anything else?
Yes. BLS.
BLS, advanced life support.
And then it's life support.
Cottage has that also.
Basic life support, yes.
And who pays Cottage?
Most of it is from insurance.
Insurance. Okay, so why aren't these people doing the same thing?
I'd like to know that, yeah, because if, if we gave them money. It would open a can of worms and we would get letters from every other ambulance.
Absolutely.
Because of the fact, let's say they have a call and they can't take it for some reason, maybe they're someplace else. This comm center is under the obligation to send whatever the nearest ambulance is. So let's say they went to C and C, and they're coming back over the Gargant Mountain, they would be the closest, but in retrospect. Other ambulance corps cover for them when they can't cover in Pawpack and Holly.
So about once every ten days, they come over here to help somebody, why isn't Cottage covering those calls?
Well, because they're on another call, usually.
Okay. Okay.
But, uh, no, it, it's part of the comm center. Kind of system that they have, and we all had to sign for it right at the beginning, that we would cover. Anyway, once, one day I was in Holmesdale in the ambulance, and they, they said, there's somebody having a heart attack on Main Street. It turned out it was me or his, or his father. So they said, you're the closest, you're going down Main Street, you take care of it. And that's what happens all over the county, so it, it, so you don't necessarily, ninety percent of the time you do your territory. But the other time is, if you happen to be the closest ambulance.
Does Cottage have any difficulties financially?
And.
Does Cottage have any financial difficulties?
Not right now, they don't, they're, they're doing quite well.
And we used to have Waymark.
Remember, they, Cottage, and Cottage took over Holmesdale now.
You know, right?
Cottage, right?
Did they?
Yeah, and that's Cottage.
So like.
For Waymark, just for Waymark. But, uh, they've taken over, and they said they can't take over anymore. You know, their, their territory is huge, all of Carmadale, all, uh, Carmadale Township, all of Fell Township. Uh, you know, and then coming over the mountain here, Waymark, Clinton, with Canaan, blah, 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 and now they do Holmesdale, cause Holmesdale really don't.
So from these numbers, I'm looking at for, uh, is this for Cottage?
Yes.
These papers, it looks like ten to fifteen percent of the calls they get go out to somebody else to cover.
Yes, because where they're located, that's the problem.
And is it always Holly that comes over, this organization, or is it somebody else?
No. You know, the one, the number one right now is Forsyth.
Forsyth, yeah.
Yes, Forsyth, yeah, all the time.
So I think we owe them a response, so somebody make a motion on how you wanna respond and say, yeah, we'll give you money, or thank you, but we have coverage and good luck, contact them and find out how to be mutually liable.
They have to be responsible to their own area, I, I just don't understand it. Why, why isn't Holly and Pawpack Township in that, why don't they have it in their budgets if they wanna do it?
From what I can see, from what they said to the commissioners, is if they don't get help financially from someone, they're reaching out to the commissioners, that they're just gonna confine it to those three boroughs over there.
Can we just respond that, let's just see your books first and then we'll make a decision from there? I just say.
We don't wanna get involved, we don't wanna get involved.
Just say, thank you, but we support our own ambulance right here in the borough, Waymark with free rent, and we take care of that.
We support them financially.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's good.
Free rent is wonderful, y'all.
Mm-hmm.
Heather, can I just send you a voice text and can you type it up and send a letter?
Yep. Absolutely.
Well, but they need to send out.
Cause they're, they're actually, if they're coming here, they're coming here because Comm Center's telling them to come here, not because Waymark is requesting them to come here.
That's exactly. Exactly.
So Randy, is that a motion that you're making to respond that we're not gonna help them financially?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Randy, seconded by Teresa, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions. Okay. Uh, what do we got? Motion and action for the data center ordinance.
Do you need me to read that?
I think you need to read that, that's so complicated.
All right, um, I need somebody else to read it, cause my eyes are like, okay, please.
Okay. I would love to, data center conditional use industrial slash manufacturing zone districts. An ordinance amending the Waymark Borough zoning ordinance to establish regulations for data centers as a conditional use. In industrial slash manufacturing zoning district, providing definitions, standards and procedures to protect the health, safety and welfare of the borough. Whereas the Borough Council of Waymark Borough, Wayne County, Pennsylvania recognizes the growing demand for data centers due to increased reliance on technology and data storage. And whereas data centers have unique operational characteristics, including high energy and water consumption, noise generation and impervious surface impacts. Which require specific regulations to protect the community and environment. And whereas Pennsylvania Municipalities Plan and Code Act two forty-seven of nineteen sixty-eight has amended. Fifty-three PS one oh one oh one authorizes municipalities to regulate land use through zoning ordinance to promote the health, safety and general welfare of the community. And whereas Waymark Borough seeks to permit data centers as a conditional use within the industrial slash manufacturing zoning district. Subject to standards that mitigate their impacts and whereas public hearings were held on. Any corners were held on, insert date, did we, uh?
No, we didn't have it.
Right, we're gonna, uh, in accordance with Pennsylvania, to solicit public input on this amendment, no, we, we advertised for this.
Exactly.
We advertised, well, in the public.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, okay. Uh, where was I, input, now, therefore, being enacted in a form deemed that by Borough Council of Waymark Borough, well, if, I guess this is kinda a waste of time to read it, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, public hearings were held, uh, okay, scratch that, um, we will advertise, I guess, that public hearing.
Have you seen on the news about these data centers?
Mm-hmm, well, that's why we're, it's.
They're extremely controversial.
Yeah, it's, if you don't have a zone set aside, that's what Joe Eunice is trying to do here, is just make a specific spot.
Waymark's so small, boy, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want anything around them, you know?
Yeah, so, uh, I guess we'll make a motion to have a little hearing.
We have two industrial.
But none of them has.
I would do that in conjunction with a meeting, I wouldn't make a separate meeting for that.
Okay.
Just have it for at the next board, at the next council meeting?
Yeah, if on the other time you'd advertise.
Yeah, and it could just be advertised as public, uh, is encouraged to attend.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It, it uses huge amount of electricity and water and other things, and it should be set back at least a half a mile. Because of the fact of, of the, the data and how it's disseminated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll read that later, uh, Borough Building Refrigeration Unit.
Yes, Refrigeration Unit, certainly, and I hope you all walk through the backside.
Mm-hmm.
I taught, I called Vicky today, uh, Vicky Fisher, and I said to Vicky, well, they're in, and they've been in for about a month. I said, when are they gonna do the products? And she says, it's gonna be at, at least another month, it might be Christmas.
Oh, okay.
So I said, okay, but in the meantime, and that's why I have on here, you and I remember when Don Suller?
Mm-hmm.
And we saw where the cuff is broken?
Oh, right, mm-hmm.
And how that, and the electrician said that was very dangerous, that the place could burn down?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think we need to identify that and do something about it.
Yeah, yeah, so the electrician from the county that, that hooked the refrigeration unit in identified, it's, uh, it's the sleeve where the power comes through the wall. Somehow there's some condensation getting in and getting on top of the, uh, the main breaker.
Yes.
And so he, he took it off, he cleaned it up, said it'll be okay for a little while, but he said we should, we gotta figure out a way to seal that. Did he ever get a surprise on that? Cause he was gonna give a surprise for the new breaker.
He didn't give it to me.
No, I never got it either, okay, um.
Should the county pay for it?
Well, well, it's, it's our existing, it's.
No, it's, it's our, it's our service unit.
See, see, he had to tap into our box.
He just hadn't noticed it, that's all.
Yeah, he, he did us a favor and, uh, yeah, so he, he tried to do what he could to clean up.
We've got a picture on your, your phone.
Yeah, boy, that's probably, who knows where that is.
Okay.
Uh.
I have a picture on my phone too, but I forgot to lift my phone up.
It really just needs to be scraped out, resealed, electrical caulking. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I think we, if we could, we should hire him if we could. He, he seemed very nervous, he crawled underneath the building, I thought I was gonna have to call it. The fire company, he was, where is dinner, so, but he.
What was his name, do you remember?
No. I'm terrible at this.
Yeah, I don't remember where that is, okay.
Yeah, but during that, and he, he also looked at a lot of other things under there, and he thought everything else was fine, cause it's just this cup.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, okay. All right, um, how can we find the name, I forget.
Oh, Vicky.
Oh, okay.
Vicky's only gonna have her job one more week though, so don't, don't put it off.
Oh, geez.
Her job one more week?
Yeah, she's gonna.
Retiring?
No, she's gonna be, uh, figure it out.
Oh, good for her.
Yeah.
I, I know an electrician as well, if you want me to contact him.
Yeah.
Okay.
He gave us a really good deal, hooking our generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, hooking up our generator, he gave us a, a really good deal.
Well, we don't have to get the kind guy, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 just have one come in and take a look.
You just wanna fix it.
It was pretty clear.
I'll get ahold of him and I have off on Friday, I can see if he'll meet me Friday.
Okay.
It's so, right over here.
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we got Water Street sign removal?
Yes, I, you know, I, where I sit in, uh, on the computer and I can see Water Street on East Street.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And people every single day stop, some turn around, some ignore and just go up the street. Those signs have to be removed.
Yeah, yeah, the, the one, the issue is on, on this end of, uh, where the stop sign used to go.
Yes.
It, it broke below the concrete, so.
Well, well, then let's cut them off, or at least put a bag over them somehow.
But we don't have this, we don't have a stop sign on this end, that's the only trouble, so if you're coming this way.
And, and, and at the, and at the Belmont Street, you have that long sign that says one way, that could be taken down immediately, couldn't it?
Isn't there?
I think there's a stop sign.
Cause we need a stop sign on this end.
On the bad side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you replace the one-way with a stop sign, or no?
No, this is just a one-way.
There's no, there's no way to dig that out and.
No, it's the, it's a curb and sidewalk, you have to, I mean, unless you can bolt the sign to the curb maybe somehow, I don't know.
Take it open.
Did you look at that?
Yeah.
You don't think we could pull that up out of there, hook something out and pull it with the back of bucket up out?
I don't know, I don't know if there's enough in there left.
They shouldn't be in there that hard, you know?
How about a, a saw that could cut through the, uh?
Yeah, I mean, you, you could cut the sidewalk, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you could cut it.
Yeah.
So why don't we just do that and then fill it back in with, with cement after we get the, the post in?
Yeah, maybe we'll get, uh, get somebody down there to take a look at it, cause we don't have those tools.
Just get, just run a cord drill. Right across the street with your saw today.
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
Sure, just run a cord drill, six inch hole, I mean.
Yeah, that's true, just put it right in the sidewalk.
Maybe we could get on a ready clip and get that, not a big deal.
Yeah, just, just go right through the sidewalk. Yeah, okay, yeah, there isn't much, okay. Uh, what else was there, gee, something else, oh, uh, oh, new business, so, uh, winning Bay checks last day was, what, this, beginning of this month? So now we have, um, Dean and then two alternates?
Yeah, but Tim can't come through football season, so.
Um, well, that's all right, well, does he put him on full time, and then he can get here when he can get here?
Yeah, but what's the point if you can't come to the hearings?
Um, I was postponed, I thought football season. That's all I got.
Sure. It's about your dad?
So. Uh, yeah, 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 he's good, he's great, he's ready to go, uh, so we have to vote Doug on, my dad, and then, uh, Tim?
Could we recheck with a solicitor, make sure that this isn't a conflict of interest when somebody is on the council and then moves house to be on the.
Well, Dean isn't, it wasn't a conflict of interest then.
It's so hard, it's, it's so hard in this town, he's like, it's my dad, wants to say, you know?
Yeah, I know, I know that Dean's on.
It's such a small pool of people that are, have show any interest at all.
Heather with Tim.
Yeah, I know, I get it, it's like.
Well, Chris is the answer, whether that would be considered a, if somebody could turn around, we've got a, a zoning board.
Chris. Hey, we're, we're, probably all related somewhere.
Yeah. It sounds like a family affair, I don't know.
Yeah.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not really into any of them.
Who, who do you, who do you want to appoint?
Doug Bailey and Tim Hess.
His spouse is.
Well, Heather's not a Borough Council.
No.
No, she isn't, but the, and the others.
No. Do you need a vote? Yeah, yeah, it could, uh, they've spoken their point, Doug Bailey and Tim Hess, so.
Would you check that next?
Yeah, 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 cause I'm basically motioning to appoint Doug Bailey and Tim Hess to plan it.
One at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, one at a time, yeah.
Okay, motion for Doug Bailey.
Congratulations.
Um, seconded by, yeah, motion made by Randy, seconded by I, all favor.
By Randy.
Aye.
And I, nays, abstention.
You need to abstain.
I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining because I, I want the solicitor to look that up.
No, abstain.
Yeah, you can't.
Well, you're not gonna get it tonight, Jane, okay? So make the motion, put them on, or let you know if they have to get kicked off.
Oh, no, I.
Uh, you didn't kick Dean off, so.
I'm making a motion for Tim Hess to appoint.
Because she.
I would do that, yeah.
I'll leave, I don't care.
Okay, timeout though. If Jane, if Jane abstains, then we don't have enough votes, right?
Four, yeah. One, two, three, four.
Okay, sorry. So Shane and Jane.
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
No, he's ready for it. All right.
If we ruled against somebody, and then we have Randy doing a motion for Tim?
I did, I made one.
Yeah, you already made a motion and then?
Second.
I made it.
Seconded for, by Donnie. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me say this, there's not gonna be conflict of interest because you have family members on Borough Council. The conflict would be on, based on an individual basis for what's brought before the planning council. But there's not a conflict of interest because you have family members in different boroughs, okay?
Okay.
Makes sense. Mm-hmm.
But we'd have to have a rule each time.
Conflict of interest exists when a public official uses their office for the private pecuniary benefit of themselves, their immediate family or business they are associated with, so, issue is mine.
Okay, all favor of Tim?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstention, motion passes. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All favor, ayes, abstentions, good night.